We're good? All right, welcome all to the Monday, December 10th, regular meeting of the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board. Going out the ECAT tonight, live from the Mary Cogdo. Or maybe we're recorded in the show. Anyways, thank you all for coming. So first up tonight, we have a sign application from Wendy's.
And Mr. Chair, the reason that was on the agenda, I had not had a chance to look at it. They had quite a number of signs and a nice little schematic. They are replacing the existing signs on the wall. And in reviewing it, I don't believe that it needs review by the board. I believe it complies because they're basically just replacing the existing wall signs and the pylon sign with new signs.
Gotcha.
In faces. And Wayne, I guess the wall signs are a complete sign, but they're smaller than the existing signs that are up there.
But I think we, changes we normally go through by the board anyways, right?
We have before some changes.
Yeah, I mean, just, just, but anyway, so, but I mean, I know what you're saying, that it doesn't look like there's any reason why we would have an issue with it. Board members, anybody?
I just want to comment that I think it's the most thorough sign package we've ever received, and I appreciate the square footage totals and the photos that go along with the before and after. And I do think, I think the "thank you" and "qualities are recipe" might be new.
Yeah, that's what I thought too.
Yeah.
Actually, I agree with that. The push-through acrylic, which was not a terminology that I had seen before, but...
Does "qualities are recipe," is that illuminated?
Yeah, this one right here. It is.
They are proposing it as illuminated. I did talk with them tonight because I thought it would be an incidental sign if it wasn't illuminated, and they agreed to do that, to make it just an unilluminated.
I thought the sign that they proposed was appropriate, given their use inside, so I didn't, I wouldn't, and plus, it's not a, unfortunately, their existing sign is a plexiglass-based sign, which, you know, it's existing, they're replacing it, so there's not much you can do about that. I have no...
Yeah, and I guess it feels sort of like, you know, in a, maybe a new business, we apply such a different standard than to, you know, an existing one where with multiple homemade signs.
I can't find it, excuse me.
If, you know, if like the original intent, you know, of the town meeting had been to sort of to improve the aesthetics of the areas, it is, even though we can make some headway with new signage, it's sort of, we don't really get that far when, you know, when we can just sort of go along with the same, the same look on a building with several homemade signs. But in this case, there's not really much we can do, the way that we're empowered to make changes to the signs.
Correct. Yeah, safe to say, I think, even if we had some bylaws in place, there could be grandfather. What's your point this week?
I mean, we could consider not allowing the 10 square feet in addition that's new. I don't know if that's what you're getting at, that there's a lot of illuminated signs already, or not.
So is it the one in front that's bigger?
I think it's, no, I think this is just, I don't think this, I think the one that says the qualities are recipe, I don't think that's there at all.
All right, that's an addition.
So that's the one Stephanie said she got them to agree not to illuminate, so if we have an issue with it...
Oh, so that one won't be illuminated?
Not illuminated.
Right, right.
But it's not a, I mean, it's essentially an individual letter sign. It's not a sign that's a, it's not a plexiglass. The one that they're adding is not one that I would take issue with.
Right, yeah.
It being new, so I would...
If that were an illuminated sign, I would be like...
I'd support it being added illuminated, the way that submitted it, from my perspective, but...
I mean, yes, it is Wendy's, it's sort of, is what it is.
I like Wendy's.
Yes, I agree.
Know if anybody would care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the signed package as submitted.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
You're nervous.
Congratulations, Wendy's.
I don't vote, I don't have to vote.
Oh, no, right, yeah. All right, next up, excuse me, Continued Site Plan, 924 Washington Street. So, as I understand, the, just before you get started, the plans came in Wednesday, but we weren't alerted, so I don't know how you want to handle this.
I haven't had a chance to review it, and not knowing that they came in last week, I was able to just today request that, would it encourage a revised quote for the stormwater management video?
Okay. Greg Driscoll of KMB Associates, representing DS Ventures for 924 Washington Street. Yeah, we understand that the plans haven't been reviewed, they had to submit them last week, but figured I'd run through the changes real quick, in order to kind of keep things moving along and continue until the next meeting. Okay, so, we revised the site access, the entrance per feedback from the planning board and previously. Before, we were proposing to continue to use the existing site access, which kind of was a curve around this way. We have since made contact with the MAST EP, asked them what their thoughts were, if they minded us relocating it. They don't mind the relocation, and they would like us to upgrade it to their current standards. This comes in a little bit this way, so we can meet the 30-foot radius. That needs to end right at our property line right here, so that's why we have a little bit of a switchback coming in, but that's much straighter and easier to access than the previous design.
Just while you're on it, so how wide is it?
It's 24 feet.
24, okay.
Yeah. We also, and after we get the approvals through the local level, we'll go to MAST EP for a access or driveway permit. And also, since we relocated the access, there's a little bit of site revisions to the layout, so this, and we also revised the drainage accordingly. So this front bio-retention area got bigger, some drainage features we had over here got a little bit smaller, so we moved it over this way. And the building was enlarged slightly, we have a five-foot bump back in here, so it's an extra 600 square feet in the building. We still meet the coverage requirement. And this is the landscaping plan that I'm showing you right here, that was requested, so we'll provide the landscaping plan, added more detail for the rain garden plantings as well, which I'm sure Wood and Kern will look at once they, when they review the drainage. Revised drainage calculations and stormwater report. And we also added some wall pack lights to the building. That was another request, landscaping and lighting, so we added the lighting as well. And pretty much you'll be with the changes we made. There's also some other comments from our requests for information that came from Wood and Kern. We noted that the sites in Zone 2 are WPA, there's a surveyor stamp on the plan now, as requested, and some other miscellaneous items. So we look forward to hearing back from staff review, as well as Wood and Kern. And any questions I can answer right now? I'll be glad to.
Seth, do you have anything you want to say? Pretty good? So I just, just curious, so looking at the landscaping plan, along the road in front of the bio detention, in front of the landscaping, so I see the green area, but it doesn't go to full width.
Yes, so...
What's that?
So there, the existing way that this entrance works is kind of, kind of weird. So it's kind of, it's wide open across properties. So we don't want to take too much away from the access to this property as well, right in here. So we went ahead and closed up our entrance right here.
Yeah.
And we're going to leave this, and there's also a catch basin right here as well. So we're just going to leave this pavement here, so that there's plenty of access for this property next door. Because otherwise, we would have to come straight out from their property, and we would have to put a radius in, and then there would have to be easements. But it seems to kind of work the way it is now, so MAST EP may come back and want us to modify that, or they may like the way that we did that. We're just, that's all pavement right now, that we're kind of keeping intact up to the property line.
Okay. And then, are there any, are we missing any elevations of the building? In fact, you know, I know it's like the, I'm assuming all these separate bays have individual doors, and there's about a six-foot change in grade, and I'm just, just curious to see what this is going to look like, since it's kind of a sensitive residential neighborhood in Park. So just, you know, I think that would be nice if the Planning and Zoning Board could get a peek, so that the town could get a peek. That's all I have.
Could you explain again, Greg, why you're keeping that paved area?
So this, this right here is the entrance to this property.
Right.
And the existing pavement is wide open right all through here. This is the edge of pavement right here, that comes around like that. So it's pretty wide open and kind of free-flowing access between here and here, kind of over our property into this.
Right.
So we continue that, straight out from there, oops, straight up on the property line on the proposed. It's easiest to show it here. If we've gone straight out from here, there wouldn't be much of a radius for pulling in to this driveway.
Probably the edge of the catch basin, I would think, more than anything.
Catch basin, yeah.
I don't really see how that improves their access. Is that catch basin installed by, as part of the road layout?
Yes, this is the road right here.
And I mean, it's relatively flat, right? And you're not proposing, your landscaping is all within, so that, that's going to be a bio-retention, so that's where all your landscaping is there.
Yep.
Is that a tree in that corner?
Right here?
Yes.
ER1.
Yes. Is it a red maple?
This is from one right here.
And that's a proposed...
It's like the property line.
Yes.
Yeah.
So is edge of pavement is pretty much the property line?
Right through here, yep.
So is there...
And this existing edge is like right through here.
So do you think Mass, do you think the state, I mean, are they going to allow you to bring that green area out like that? It just seems awkward, and then...
Right, but it's off the curb line, where they might, like another yard could, another, like I say, a different property could, they're, they could have grass that goes right to the, to the curb line, right, which is another, whatever, 10 or so feet from that, from there, right?
They may want us, because this is the property line here, they may want, we're probably going to have to grant them an access or an easement for their radius to come along this way, if we do decide to, you know, if that's what they want, us to sweep this in like this with the 30-foot radius.
So they're like probably numerous properties along that line, where their yard or whatever else they have go right up to the curb line.
Yeah.
Or that particular area was paved rather than having a curb, like with, with kind of defined entrances.
Yeah.
Because, don't we have something on a bylaw about slopes on the property line? Because I'm looking, I'm thinking, I mean, that, that, that hill comes down and terminates right at the edge of pavement, which is, because normally we don't have edge of pavement being the property.
So you're suggesting it's drained to the...
Well, no, let's say, I'm suggesting, let's say the state comes back and wants to clip off the green portion, that's, you know, that, then that's kind of a different plan that we're looking at. And I'd rather look at that now than after we approve it and then, you know, because it's really not a, you know, that's not always caught necessarily by the applicants. If the state changes that, that doesn't always come back here, because it's not often you have something like that, so...
I'm also, I'm sorry, I'm still confused as to what access you're thinking you need to provide to the butter, because you're, what you have in green, which I'm presuming is grass in your landscaping, again, I haven't had a chance to look at this.
Actually, if you look right here, it's right there, I mean, that's, remember the apartment, oh, that building to the right? See how that pavement goes all the way across there?
Yeah.
Well, I would think this is an opportunity to delineate the two properties, as opposed to continue, but I'm still having, what I'm saying is, if you look right here, so you have a tree being planted right here. This is your property line, right? That's the corner of the subject property. So what would you need to grant an easement or allow them that? I mean...
So if there's a radius, the reason why this comes in this way is because if we do the 30-foot radius and it goes past the projection of our property line out to the edge of the road, we need an easement on this guy's property.
Correct.
So our radius has to stop...
Or you need a smaller building to get both radiuses past the property line, is really what it comes down to. And here's my concern, state says no, not to make that, you know, then you can't do that, then we're back to square one, and, I mean, I would just wonder if it makes sense that that radius should be backed now and reduce the size of the building now. I get, obviously, it seems like this project wants to build the biggest building possible, but I'm kind of skeptical that they're going to approve that. It's rather unusual.
Yeah, I mean, well, I think, when you think about how, you know, sort of, how I've seen the yards go up to, you know, we'll call it the gutter line, I suppose, I mean, so if you look, the straight line, that just so happens that that parking entrance happened to be very wide in the section, see what I mean? I mean, so I don't know, I have no idea what they'll say, but...
Go back to that view.
For the continuity of 138, more or less, the people's front yards go out to maybe like five feet, you know, four feet off the side of the road, whereas this one just, I'll go back over here.
Well, so let's look at the pole. Let's see, I don't think, so look at the pole. So is the, so Greg, the green that you're showing, right, of the, yeah, that, is that exist, is that green now?
What's green right now is this, right here.
Oh, that's right.
And this right here. And then from here to here, the existing opening is the kind of spans the property line right here, and there's no easements or anything, but it's just wide open.
Okay, so you're not going out any further. But, so where's that catch basin?
Oh, it's right here, see?
And the state, the state's put that in?
Just having trouble moving this around. There we go.
Yeah, it looks like it's probably state-stranded.
It would have to be, right?
And this, these properties are owned by separate individuals, right?
Yes.
This has been sold or whatever, it's...
Well, I mean, how long would it, I know you were able to deal with the state relatively quickly, but how much turnaround time do you, would you expect having them to approve that actual, that part of the plan?
They want us to go to them after we get the approvals at the local level.
Okay.
So, and then it could take a couple months.
Oh, yeah.
Because they have bad logs.
Yeah, I mean, it does seem like it becomes, the neighboring property now has, would be an, you know, an unacceptable entrance exit from their property, based on what you have, and whether or not that's the applicant's responsibility, you know, I think you...
What is the width of the revised neighbor's entrance, you know, from, from, because you're, you're developing right up to that property, the southern property line? Go ahead. Because even though...
It looks like it's less than 20 feet.
Well, yeah, I mean, if this is 24, I'm looking like maybe it's 12 or 14 feet.
Just going by the graphic scale, it's...
Yeah, so, yeah, it's about 14.
So that, and that's the only entrance to that site?
No, it's actually the other side.
It's the other entrance, it's here.
Right, okay, so...
And then does that road, looks like the road might travel around the back of the building as well.
Oh, yeah, it does actually, oh, yeah, it does look, yeah.
All the way around there.
Yeah, so that's actually sort of good for safety, so that, you know, yeah.
So, this is an interesting situation, so if we, it's almost like, you know, let's say if we were proposing this, let's say it was the applicant of both properties, we would be looking at sort of a one-way entrance or exit for that 14. Are we allowed, how do we handle that in this case? You know what I'm saying? Like, I mean, it seems...
It seems odd.
If we can get, do we need approval from them and make it part of, you know, I mean, it's not, they don't own the property, but legally, they've been, it's a shared entrance, you know?
MAST DOT will make us...
Yeah, but I'm just thinking, I'm thinking we need to handle this better and more comprehensive before it goes to MAST DOT. I think we need to think of what, what we want to say.
I think he just said exactly what needs to happen, is they need to fix the entrance for the adjacent property.
Who's "they"?
The applicant.
The applicant. I believe they're going to make us...
I think that that's exactly, unfortunately, that seems, that's what needs to, it's an existing use, they've been using it, they, in some sense, they have a, probably have an established use there.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, I mean, I would think we need that resolved prior to our wrapping this up.
I mean, just to be clear, so this, and I have it up there, okay? I see where it expands, but this, where I'm pointing now, is, that doesn't extend on to the subject parcel.
So that's this right here.
Right, they just want to have a really safe exit if, if you're sort of blocked off.
Yeah.
They're used to...
Right. My concern is now that, that can function as a two-way entrance, there's enough width. Granted, yes, they're coming in on, on the applicant's property, but now by closing that off...
Then it's not to width.
It's not, and we need to...
That's the, that landscape, that's right there with that.
Either remedy that.
I think, I think they need to fix it.
Yeah, I think we need, I think it would help the process, at least for me, I, if we could get some sort of plan and agreement from the bylaw property.
Right, right.
Because I think we have to, I don't see how we can't, cannot.
Right, you wouldn't let this, you wouldn't allow this to be developed this way, right?
It doesn't mean a bylaw, 14 feet, and, and, and like you said, there's currently some shared use, where it's, it's been in play for, for a few decades.
50 years it's been like that, right? So...
But what about the other?
Oh, we're going to have 30 ones, huh?
The other second...
Well, I can tell you, it's been there 50 years.
The other second entry exit to the property on the right, is that not sufficient width? I mean, I can't tell how big it is.
But if you, I mean, if you look at the way, you don't know if there's a, you know, if there's a big enough turning radius, let's say, you know, let's say a fire engine needs to get to this building back here, can a fire engine get around the building? I don't think it can. I don't think you have the turning radius, so, to get around the building back there, and that would be, my primary concern is, is do we have access? So there's, there's another building back there, you don't even see on those pictures, right?
No, I can see the building.
But you could see it here.
So, again, I'm, I may be a little slow on this one. The, where they are currently turning or entering on to the subject parcel is, I know you keep pointing, I want to see for the paved area, so, because Wayne, you just talked about the fire engine and the turning radius, but getting around the building will be...
Take a look at this, just, this is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Essentially, this entrance is becoming nonusable at 14 feet, right? So now we're saying, okay...
You're talking about the turning radius of 138, not behind the building.
I am talking about behind the building, because a fire engine, let's say this, if this entrance has been, and a fire engine has to come in through here, somehow get around the building and get over here, which I don't think is possible. So I think that what has to happen is you need to rework the entrance on the neighboring property, which I think you can. I don't think it's really that big of a deal, but you just, your applicant has to...
Yeah, or create an easement on your property, man, there's, there's ways to make it work by doing that.
Well, I don't think they can, because they don't have enough, they need, they need the retention area for the...
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't know, right?
Unless they reduce the...
Yeah, even if the, even if it's taken off the property and in the right-of-way, if the radius comes around like that, there...
Yeah, but it's not just that, you have to widen it.
Put this side to, and...
You have to widen it, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it sounds like, at this point, we don't have any, we don't know how big a lot is behind the building, we don't know what the size of the entrance is on, on time at the body.
It still narrows out to this anyways.
It sounds like...
Yeah, it's not the narrow, it's the turning radius for a fire truck to get back there that I'm concerned about.
But, but I am concerned with the width, because again, with our bylaws, now it becomes a one-way entrance, so...
Yeah, I was referring specifically to the width between the building and the...
Right, but that, but that exists, but anyways, but anyways, I think, there are several issues, I think, that need to be explored that we're talking about, right?
Yeah, we could talk to the neighbor, we could propose what we think will work.
Talk to the fire department.
But I think maybe a condition of approval would be to go through the MAST DOT process, you know, if it's approved at some point in future, and then come back and show you what we did, what they, okay, if that's something that you think...
Well, that's going to exist anyways, but I would rather see...
Yeah, we can propose...
A solution with the neighbor proposed now.
Yeah, we can try to come up with something now, what we think would work with MAST DOT, but, you know, we can't go to them until we get the local...
Right, I, no, I understand, I mean, I understand that if MAST DOT kicks it, but I think right now...
Chicken and egg.
Right, and we could talk to MAST DOT, you know, up the road, if they, if they change, let's say, let's say this board approves something, and MAST DOT changes it, we could, you know, you could go this, well, wait a minute, Eastern Fire Department checked in, planning board, you know, they, they wanted this, and, you know, so... But, and it seems really the issue more has to do with issues off DOT land anyways, for the most part. I think, I mean, to your point of the width and, and the turning radius.
Except for the curb cut, yeah.
Yeah.
The width of the curb cut.
They're probably still going to want 30-foot radiuses, so...
Plus, you're going to have to move the catch basin, right?
Or if it stays that way, we'd have to go back around.
Right, you'll have to do something with it.
Like, like they do here, there's a catch basin there.
Yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, that can be handled.
Okay, so, anyway, so hopefully, when we next get together, we can have some solutions proposed with the neighboring property. Are we, everybody else have anything else?
Comments from staff and, and Wood and Kern?
Yeah, we'll have that too, obviously, yeah, when I say, so, okay.
Yeah, we'd like to request a continuous...
Yeah, to the next meeting, which is January 14th.
Motion to continue.
Second.
January 14th.
I heard a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, next up, yeah, next, 199 Purchase Street.
Okay.
Mr. Vance will be...
I'm going to recuse myself.
He's in himself. And Debra, you took care what you needed to with the Mullin rule, right?
Correct.
Great, thank you, much appreciated. 199 Purchase Street, where's my voice?
Greg Driscoll will take up just for engineering, for the, these are investments for 199 Purchase Street.
Okay, so, when we last met, we had to continue, as we do not have a quorum, have we received any further information since then?
And I don't think the board requested any other additional information.
Right, so I think our next step would be to see if the advocate wants us to close the public hearing. Please identify yourself further.
Gary Deion.
Grab a microphone. Sorry, it's going to...
This one who pushed the door open, so I can see that.
Okay.
Anybody else want to add something?
No, I just want to say, I haven't really spoke too much the last few meetings.
Yes, if everyone can speak up, so that...
Please identify yourself. Yeah, my name is Joseph Gromal, the Fusion...
You have to speak into the microphone.
Sorry, sorry.
TV.
Fusion Investments, I haven't really spoke too much the last few meetings. Heard a lot of the comments, and, you know, I'm an Eastern resident, built a house in Eastern 10 years ago, I'm an attorney in Eastern, my office is in Eastern, my kids obviously live in Eastern, and I care about Eastern a lot, so, I mean, this duplex that we're proposing, we're not trying to come in here and, you know, make a big, you know, buy... a big, you know, buck here, we're not, you know, typical developers trying to, you know, just squeeze something in. I think this is something that will really benefit the area. The area is very diverse. It does have multifamilies there, it has a ten-unit apartment building down the street, golf course, church. And I think just for, you know, I mean, I've heard comments where, you know, people suggested, why don't we rehab the house that's there? If you're driven by that, the house that's there is not very nice. It doesn't make the neighborhood look nice, you know. It's just, I think having a brand-new duplex here where a family from maybe other towns could come in, bring their families in and afford, you know, a brand-new, basically, brand-new house or duplex, whatever you want to call it, where if you're gonna buy a brand-new house in Eastern, they wouldn't be able to afford it. You know, we're gonna build a beautiful, beautiful duplex, and I just think a lot of the comments that I've heard don't really address or, you know. Basically, what I'm trying to say is we're looking to make the area better, not adverse. We're not doing anything to make the, the area look like this, you know, apartment building complex or anything like that. We're trying to, I care about Eastern and I want to make it look good, and just, I haven't heard any reasons why it shouldn't be approved. There's been other duplexes approved pretty much exactly the same in Eastern. I haven't heard any reason why ours shouldn't be, and those other ones should have. I know it's, I mean, we have a huge lot, it's very big. We did try to work with at least one of the neighbors that made the biggest complaint, and, you know. She, she basically said, we want to, eventually, at first, we were gonna put up two single families, but then we thought that was too much. But she was willing to give us some land if we built her a garage. You know, I don't want to get into different things, but it's funny how when, when we changed what we wanted to do, because we thought maybe two single families would have been too big, but, and then all of a sudden, she comes in here and, you know, bashes the whole thing. So I just find that very disingenuous. I haven't said anything.
Okay, I just want to, I just asked if we want to close the public hearing. This is information we don't really.
Okay.
We don't need to get into personal stuff, because then they're gonna want to say something, and I don't want to do that, so.
But I haven't said anything for.
No, I understand, but I don't want to talk about that stuff, because it's irrelevant to the planning board.
All I'm saying is I care about Eastern, and I think it's gonna make a good impact on the community. It's a very diverse area, again, has golf course, church, ten-unit multifamily down the street, three other multifamilies. One of the residents said there was no multi, no duplexes, there was three of them. And there's been one just like this approved in Eastern. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
So, back to my original question. Would you like to close the hearing?
Yes. Can I make a comment?
If it's different from what we've heard, I really want to move this along, okay? I don't want to hear anymore, I don't want to hear any repeats of what we've talked about for the last four meetings, okay? And I want you to keep it brief, very brief. And you have to grab a microphone and identify yourself. And if it's repeated what we're doing, I'm gonna cut you off, because I just, we need to move this along. We have a full agenda today.
I deserve it.
Alan Huffness, One Eighty-Four Purchase Street. The only issue is on the, the other duplexes around.
I'm gonna stop you right there.
No, I sent an additional.
We, members of board, we're very aware of where duplexes are located in Eastern, so whether, we don't need to discuss whether there are duplexes or not. We all know where our duplexes are.
The only thing is, is they're not duplexes. I sent pictures to Ms. Danielson, and she knows that there's the two closest are single-family homes, which may be an in-law.
Right, and we're very aware of that.
Good.
Okay.
I'm done.
We eat, sleep, and breathe the Eastern's plan. We know what's in that neighborhood, believe it or not, so. Appreciate it, and I don't mean to be rude, I just, you know, I, I think we've been very generous with, with letting people go on, and just have to reach a point, I get, nobody wants anything ever built in their backyard, but we just need to, you know, at some point, move that along. So, okay, so did, you ready to close this? Okay, so would someone make a motion on that, please?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second thought?
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Motion passes. Okay, so now, we won't take any more input from the applicant or the audience. Is there anybody under Stephanie, if you had anything you wanted to add? Or if any board members had anything they wanted to say? Otherwise, we can entertain a motion, or we can make no motion, so, whatever is at the board's pleasure at this point. But I prefer that a motion be made.
So Greg, what do you mean, no motion?
Well, I mean, we're not forced to vote right now, but we've extended this meeting a couple times because we didn't have a quorum, so I'd, if there's more information that a board member needed, I hoped we would have heard it before we voted to close the public hearing. I think we have a responsibility to the applicant and to the residents of Eastern to, to move this along. Again, we don't have to vote tonight if we don't want to, but we need to in the very near future, but if there's no, if there's no, no additional information, which is not gonna come in now that we've closed the public hearing, and if there's no additional time needed to deliberate, then why not be efficient and, and take a vote? And if someone's not in favor of a project, you could still make a motion to to approve or not approve, and then, yeah, the thing is always, you tend to want to make motions in the affirmative on special permits, since a supermajority is required. By that, I mean if, if one, on any given project where a supermajority is required, if you were to vote to approve said project, and there was one vote against it, then it would not approve. If someone were to make a motion not to approve, and there was one or two against that, then you're in this infinity loop, because you can't, so that's why, the first thing they teach you at planning board camp is you always make motions in the affirmative. And the chair can't make motions, otherwise I would.
Supermajority is how many, Greg?
Super what?
Supermajority is how many.
You're inclu, yeah, is that what you asked? Are you in? Yeah, I mean, the four of us, four of us are voting, and this, for this project to pass, you'd need four votes. That's supermajority, four of the five, where we have a recusal on downer members, so that's why we're short numbers.
So you're saying regardless of how we're voting, we should vote to approve so that we can take a vote? Not vote, I think you meant to say make a motion. Sorry, make a motion.
I personally feel it's always better to make a motion in the affirmative for the reasons I, I tried to describe. I may not have been very succinct, but anyways.
All right, well, I suppose then.
Why would we just have this awkward silence?
I will, I will make a motion to approve the plan for One Ninety-Nine Purchase Street, special permit duplex.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstaining? Okay, so that's three opposed and one abstaining. Abstaining doesn't, I guess it's irrelevant.
Right, doesn't matter.
All right, so, that's it. Thank you. All right, so next up, Lincoln, are we still, are we doing Lincoln two?
Yeah, they did not request a continuous.
Oh, they're here.
I did see Mr. Adams.
Okay, Lincoln Estates Two.
It was fast.
Oh, you do need to vote to continue Baron Estates.
Oh, okay, so why are we wait for the next?
Yes.
Motion to continue Baron Estates to the.
Fourteenth.
Next meeting, January fourteenth.
Second thought?
All those in favor? Motion passes. Lincoln Estates Two. The sequel. It's freezing. What is that?
That's the.
Fight style.
Yeah, well, it's the cover for this charger, yeah.
Hello again.
Once I grab the microphone. We got the economy.
Do you?
Yeah. There you go. Welcome back.
Welcome. Good evening. It's fine? It's good?
Yeah, just, yeah, it doesn't, it's for TV, it's not for applications.
Good evening, Walter Hermano, Hermano Engineering. We're here for Lincoln Estates Two, and my client, Mr. Phil Adams, with me. Thank you for hearing us.
You're welcome.
The last time we met, we went through comments from the board.
Okay.
And tonight, I think we're here to just to get clarification on what the board's expectations are for this project, what your requirements are. There was a list of waivers requested, and I gathered from our last meeting that it was two major issues, I believe. There was not a major one, but environmental impact report. I wasn't sure if we got a resolution, if that was truly gonna be required or not on this project. I know it was recommended very briefly to describe a few things, so I just wanted clarification if that was to be a requirement or not.
I remember I was talking about storm drainage, the environmental impact.
I don't think, we didn't talk about that. We certainly waived that a lot in the past, but I remember, right, my recollection was the stormwater management.
Right.
Really what we talked about.
So let's talk about the environmental impact report, because that was one of my comments. They were asking for relief from that, and I felt that, you know, addressing the questions, and I'm trying to find which number, okay, this is number two. So the elements of the report that are to be addressed include description of existing use, general topography, unusual geological formations and soils, the impact of the project on these features, whether there's mapped habitat or not, summary tables showing percentage of tract to be occupied by buildings, lot coverage proposed, et cetera, heights of structures in relation to surrounding area, architectural and landscaping techniques to be used to blend structures with surrounding area of building to be constructed, et cetera, daily water requirements and daily vehicle trips generated. And I think that the applicant's reason for requesting that waiver is that it's just a two-lot subdivision. My feeling is that I don't think it's over burdensome to ask the applicant to address these issues. I mean, they may not need to go to the level in depth that they would if this were a seven- or ten-lot subdivision, but considering that it is in an environmentally sensitive area, it's surrounded by wetlands, and the, just the comments and concerns received by the neighbors that, again, I didn't feel that it would be. And not all the issues necessarily, like daily water requirements, I mean, it's a two-lot subdivision, but to just put a quick report together, I just didn't feel was overly burdensome, and it really ensured that the board was doing its due diligence because, again, of the sensitivity of this particular site.
Thank you.
That was why I recommended requiring.
Thank you, Stephanie. I was just trying to get clarification, because my take in the last meeting was basically the two issues that seemed to be unresolved. That was a minor one, and the major one was the stormwater report. I think when we left, the board was gonna hold to a stormwater study for this project to ensure that there be no downstream flooding of any properties. Just correct me if I'm wrong.
That's true, and the, we requested a quote to do the stormwater review from Beta Engineering. They provided the quote, and it's my understanding that a deposit has been made and they've been notified. But that money, the monies came in, I think, the beginning of last week. So they certainly did not have enough time to finish a report for tonight's meeting.
Okay, so what, I just want a clarification on what the parameters are gonna be for the stormwater report. I think we're all familiar with stormwater and calculations and engineering and so forth. But again, this project is just a two-lot subdivision, not subject to stormwater management standards. There's ten standards overall, through the Wetlands Protection Act, stormwater management. And I just want a clarification, if we're just concerned about no adverse effect on abutting properties, you know, then I can study it from that perspective. I just don't want to produce something that is not what the board intended us to try and produce for this project.
So if I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
I think the approach to this is going to be a little different than the standard, where you'd produce your stormwater management report and your drainage calculations and all of that, because you'd be constructing some type of stormwater management system. You do have some, I believe, some stormwater controls or grading on the property, but I think what we've asked Beta to do is to look at the site, get a sense of what it was pre-development conditions. I mean, you, there has been a roadway constructed there, and then to ensure that there isn't going to be adverse impact on the abutting properties, and based on their initial review of what you've submitted, there may be some questions, and to keep things moving along, what we'd like to do is just have them communicate with you, if that's all right.
Consultants are consultants, fine. That's not a problem.
Yeah, I think if I, if I could jump in, you know, in the past, this board has expressed a concern that, and I'm not saying it's happening, this case hasn't even started, but sometimes with peer review, things can get a little carried away, and, you know, prior to Stephanie being in the position she's in now, with her predecessor, we had talked about, really on larger projects, maybe getting a scope of what peer review was gonna be, because it was, we were hearing more and more complaints, you know. So this is, I mean, I hear that it is, it is a sensitive environmental area, but it also is only two lots, doesn't mean, but, so I think, I think the board is concerned, we've heard in the past and presently about the the concerns of the abutters, and where this project kind of started and stopped. So I think, hopefully, you know, and I think Stephanie will be able to guide, kind of what she just said, guide through a stormwater management review process that makes sense for what it is. It's two lots, not eighty-two lots, right? And, you know, it sounds to me, I don't want to speak for Stephanie, but her concerns on the environment impact report, we've waived those many times on projects substantially larger than this. This does have some sensitive areas, so, but kind of the bullet point she ticked off sounds, I think you could handle pretty easily with a, you know, a memo or letter or report where, you know, to the board, you know, to the department, to the board, and then we can, you know, we can just take it from there, right? Is that, you know, so.
Exactly.
I mean, I think the board certainly, we wanted to see stormwater management. I mean, I think the board certainly, we wanted to see stormwater management as we expressed last week. But we are aware that, yeah, it's only two lots. And, you know, if, sometimes with peer review, if Beta starts going in one direction, if you think it's, you know, you're the designer, if you think it's, then, you know, talk with Stephanie. And if we're going to always talk with the board, you know, that...
I just need to know what the parameters were for the stormwater. Infiltration on this site would be impossible.
Mm-hmm.
Water quality, volume, that would be rather impossible, too. There's just not a lot of space between the roadway and the property boundaries, if I may.
So is this something like you'd handle conference call?
Yeah.
Between Beta and the applicant? Maybe that's the way to... That way, right, you know, before you spend...
Or...
Your time, your money. You know, you can figure out what... I mean, I understand, you know, you want to...
Right, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, it sounds like a conference call would be a wise endeavor and then you got to hash it out.
Or we could arrange, if you want to commit and meet, we can arrange a meeting internally as well.
So you were removing the mounds?
There you go.
Removing the mound, so...
That's correct.
So the report will show that you're not...
You can tell from there.
I actually got my screen to work for me. It's like a plan. But, um, yeah. So the report would show that you don't have more water flowing onto that neighbor's property, you know, after than before? Is that like the sort of thing that you'd have, like in a mine that, as far as?
Well, this mound is in this area right here.
Yeah.
And currently, this abutter...
No, they were flowing the other opposite way, right? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they're coming onto my client's property. In more than one way, too. There's also a pump over here for the sump in the basement. And that's constantly pumping our water down this driveway, which is additional water that...
Actually, right now, I guess.
Yeah, it's probably going 24/7 right now.
I don't mind.
Going 24/7.
And the road's sort of almost going at the existing... How's the road going at the existing grade if the wetland is at 206?
Slightly above.
Okay.
We had to raise the road one to two feet, thereabouts, in order to accommodate the equalizer pipes with the same inverts underneath the roadway to ensure the water did carry in the direction that was going to go, currently goes right now.
And the water is going to go, sorry, where?
It goes right into this wetland body right here. I took the opportunity with my client to walk the project again, but a little bit beyond the proposed limit of work. We followed the downstream location into the adjacent subdivision to understand not only the culvert, which is rather large, and as the comments from the planning board address, the culvert to be lowered a foot, you know, will alleviate some of this water that's...
I mean, that one that was installed by whoever way back, yeah, a long time ago, right, yeah.
Yeah, but to have it lowered a foot will alleviate some of the water that's backing up currently.
Yeah.
So that's going to go downstream. So we follow downstream. There's a contributing subdivision up here that somehow manages... I didn't go to its actual discharge point, but maybe my client has seen it. But it discharges and connects to the stream off his property in this general vicinity. And then this meanders underneath a three-pipe culvert for the adjacent subdivision, not too far away. And those pipes are 30 inches in diameter, there's three of them. And the culvert itself is, I believe, a three-by-four. None of them are flowing full, even probably during our worst storm events. They can handle a significant amount of water.
Did they make that as like a flyaway thing when the...
Excuse me?
I wonder why they made those? Was it because for the... Maybe when the...
Maybe, uh...
Oh, those, the three-foot, oh...
The three-pipe?
Yeah, I was just wondering what they were originally for.
Originally, when I developed that property on the other side, there was a... And I bought it.
Oh, yeah.
There was two six-foot pipes in there. And we went before the board and we wanted to remove it and add one 36-inch pipe. And the board felt that because there was two six-foot pipes in there, there was a reason for it.
Oh, yes.
So we ended up putting three 30-inch pipes in there, which... This is the wet season right now. There's less than two inches of water there. All the properties, I'm downgrading to everybody except for where this goes down until Barney's yard, which has always flowed that way. But this is one 30-inch, 36-inch pipe, emptying down to three 30-inch pipes that have less than two inches of water in them. So it's impossible for, no matter how much water you put through there, to flood the other end. What we did find was, when we walked it, was the water coming down the back, like Walter said, was coming down from a subdivision up here. And it was running down, and it was feeding into that, down on her property, and it was spreading out a little bit. What I said to her, was, and her husband, I would be happy to bring a couple of my guys in to do some maintenance with shovels. And just, I noticed that that running area, the trees had fallen down and made little dams all along the way, and the water was spreading out. Her concern was that spreading out water, she thought was going to flood her property. She said to me in a statement that her driveway, water was washing over her driveway. Her driveway is three feet higher than the pipes that have two inches of water in them. So I can't imagine ever water has gone over that driveway. But if she did allow us to clean that up a little bit, just a little maintenance, would probably keep the water closer together instead of just spreading it out, which is what her concern was. She seemed okay with it. She didn't give me permission to do it. I offered it and trying to, you know, in good faith. As far as the other properties go, I'm downgrading to all of them. So putting stormwater measurements in there isn't going to do anything for them.
No, I think I was just trying to, like, you know, get, refresh my memory on what was...
Yeah. And this house, like you said, they're actually dumping water, pumping containers through all my property. And, you know, that's a problem, but...
And, Mr. Chair, I mean, that's part of the reason for having this stormwater review done because the other thing that could result is a confirmation of what Mr. Adams is saying by your consultant, so that after the development occurs, if there are any complaints, you have something.
Right, and that's the main reason for it, right there. Obviously, it's a very wet area, and it's much of east in this.
And I know these neighbors now, this neighbor, I've spoken with this neighbor, and they are no longer having concerns. The neighbor down here that was, Joe Filoni, has moved away, and there's a new neighbor. I haven't met that new neighbor. The only person that seemed to have concerns that I know of was Barney. And we went over, we actually went over to her house and met with her and her husband and walked the site.
So, oh, I'm sorry.
And she pointed out, she said, this is this other area, she said, this is really causing my problem. And it was the other, someone else's property dumping water into hers. And I said, well, I can't do, really do anything about that, you know. And I also pointed out to her, at the culvert that's there on this property, the level of the water. I said, that'll never rise. It'll have to go through that culvert before it'll go over your driveway.
So I remember last week, or last time we discussed this, there was talk of an existing culvert coming up, 18 inches. Was that based on your calculations? Or, I mean, it wasn't...
That's the...
Who did... Where did it... I'm trying to remember what...
The conservation agent.
Okay.
That they... Right, and that's not, like, an ancient culvert. It's not an old culvert. It was what was installed as part of the preparation for development of the property.
Sure. So it needs to be corrected?
Yes.
Yes, and I have plans to correct it.
Right, okay. I was just trying to remember, yeah.
And I just want to remind Mr. Adams, if you're talking, because you keep pointing up to what appears to be a wetland area. So if you're planning on doing work in that area...
Yeah, careful with those tools.
You need to make sure you talk to the conservation agent and...
Yes, I know that.
Okay.
It's a 24-hour notice.
It's a reminder.
I'm waiting, I mean, we went down there and looked at it, and it's wet season, so it's obviously not a good time to do it.
But it may require a filing, you know, I'm not sure what, it may require a filing and approval by...
Right, we're definitely going to have discussions with conservation before approaching the wetlands and do any work in that area. There's a few suggestions, as Mr. Adams is explaining, that could possibly alleviate some of the, rather, the spread of the water. I think through the years, the channel might have been choked out a little bit. So now it seems to come up to the sides a little bit, too close to her driveway. We did look, this is the box culvert, by the way. And down on the adjacent subdivision, the three pipes that Mr. Adams speaks of, I looked for a high watermark on both of them, both of those structures. There really is no high watermark except for a couple of inches of flow on either pipe. So I see there's the amount of water that's going through there. Wetlands come and go. They do change in elevation through the years. And I did advise the neighbors what could be done out there, obviously with discussions and approvals if necessary from Conservation Commission, if they had any concerns about their driveway that might erode. I don't understand how that could possibly be happening from the amount of water flowing through there unless maybe the brook is getting choked out a little bit, and like I said, the water's spreading out left and right.
Yeah, so I guess maybe I just thought that by talking about it, you sort of kind of get a better idea about the kind of the scope of the stormwater. So is this going to be a public road eventually, or?
No.
Private, no?
No. No, the applicant has asked for...
Every time I touch it, it's, I don't mean to interrupt.
The applicant has asked for several waivers, and what... The understanding is that the road will be maintained privately. It's not going to be a public town-accepted road.
I guess my only other thought is that, you know, anyone that's plowing that with a decent-sized truck is going to go straight down that road and push the snow right into the wetland. I don't know if there's any other, anything that could possibly be done to a...
Well, they'll have to turn it up.
Well, I mean, if you go straight out, yeah.
They should provide...
I was looking more like straight off Lincoln Street, right, yeah, just kind of sit right down there and... As far as you can, but...
Oh, this, right here?
Yeah, if it went straight, yeah, if it went right down there. The swell there, right, so, yeah.
It's going to end up there anyways.
No, right, yeah, yes.
We may be able to put something there that would discourage them from going straight into the wetlands.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you could try to slow things down sometimes rather than just plowing the salt.
Well, I am sure that the Conservation Commission will require that you not deposit snow into the wetland.
Yeah, even a curb, I suppose, you know, at least keeps, you know...
Yeah, you put a sign up.
Someone from pushing, pushing straight through, like, over it.
Yeah. All right, so it sounds like we need to, obviously, we need to request, but not really to a date certain yet because there's a little bit of work to be done. Right, no sense of meeting until...
Well, the next meeting's the fourteenth.
Yeah.
How many weeks is that?
About four.
Yeah, I think that's...
That's enough?
Yeah, I think you can get a good...
Okay, I mean, you can always... So, I mean, I guess what we covered, right, we're good?
I think so. Now, as far as the whole project's concerned, you know, I know Frank couldn't be here tonight, by the way. He had a prior obligation. But I know there's a list of waivers requested on this proposed development. That is the planning board, do you have any concerns with any of the other waivers? Anything that I should know of so I can move forward and, you know, produce a stormwater report? If there's anything else, you know, I want to have it addressed. That way I can plan for it.
Do you have a list of waivers?
I do.
Looks like you were...
It was lighting and...
Do you want to just take up, or just take off what they are real quick?
Yeah, sure.
See if anybody else...
Five point, two point one, relief from the requirement of preparing an environmental, and we talked about that, the impact report. Relief requested from the requirement of submitting a stormwater report, which we talked about. Relief requested from the requirement, submitting a solar, that's covered. Let's see. Relief requested from the requirement of showing all trees 10 inches and larger within 50 feet of the roadway center line. My comment was specific reason why warranted, not provided. That was discussed a little bit at the last meeting, but I'm not, I'm not sure... Still wasn't sure why you wouldn't want to have them identify those.
There wasn't really any, I mean, we walked it.
Was there other any there?
There wasn't any significant trees within that. It's just sending a survey tree mount to locate trees. I mean...
No, I don't think, I don't think that was...
I don't think there were any trees that were, in my opinion.
No, that was my thought, too. I mean, I didn't think there was any large trees there.
Most of this is already in, most of this exists. Coming down the roadway and taking a ride.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I mean. I don't, I didn't think...
The roadway center line, right, okay.
That ain't even clear. It's not developed as you see on the plan yet.
Relief requested from the requirement of providing 25-foot easement at the end of the turnaround. And again, some of these, right, but I just felt that the reason why, I mean, the waiver was requested, the reason why wasn't provided. So, again, so at the end of the turnaround or cul-de-sac, specific reason why warranted, not provided. Relief is requested from the requirement of providing a 30-foot right-of-way at the end of the turnaround. I just had a comment that the wetlands comprising the rear preclude any future continuation of the street, so that certainly made sense. Let's see, relief requested from street design standards as shown in Table one. Specific reason why warranted, not provided. However, since the road will be serving only the two proposed lots, waiving of the berm curving and sidewalk construction is warranted. Six point, two point four, relief is requested from geometric design standards as shown in Table two. Again, that was the specific reason why warranted, not provided. But again, since the road's only serving two lots, it would seem to be warranted to the extent the applicant can demonstrate adequate line of sight in each direction at the Williams Way and Lincoln Street intersection.
It's actually on there now, isn't it?
That's correct. Yeah, that is on there now.
Relief requested from the requirement of setting two special monuments tied into the Massachusetts State plane. Again, specific reasons why not warranted. I think that was discussed at the last meeting. But I still think that, you know, the purpose of doing that is to build a system, a digital system that can then be used in the future by all. And if it continues to be waived, then, yes, we did, yes.
We discussed, and I thought, I thought at the time, we, probably it wasn't very onerous to do that particular...
Is that, is that the whole list?
Nope, nope.
Given that...
I just wanted to tink through the list and then we...
I only have two more. Relief is requested from the requirement of installing a looped water main within the subdivision and installing. And this Jack Marsh indicated concern with waiving the looped water main. Regarding the hydrant, the applicant indicated the proposed two homes are to be serviced by individual water lines and one fire hydrant, which will provide additional protection to the existing homes in the vicinity. That, I think that we need to, you need to be talking with the water division.
There must be a reason, okay, they, it's usually not a major concern. They say they prefer to have it looped and then, that's the end of the story. No one ever loops? When was the last time someone looped a water main?
Well, I mean, they tried to.
I think they pushed hard.
I mean, because they want to flush it.
Let Stephanie first the list, please.
The requirement of installing streetlights, specific reason why warranted, why warranted, not provided. And I think that was also discussed. I think you...
I met with Jack Marsh last week.
Okay, so I just, so here's my thought, okay? So to Stephanie's request, just next time you're in, just give us a write-up why you want each one of these. It can be a little blurred because we asked that for everybody. It's not just uniform. To Wayne's point, if, you know, the Mass G.I.S. I tend to think I kind of want to request that, but that's not going to affect anything now. We can all talk about that later. The water line, let's get over something and write it from Jack Marsh, thumbs up, thumbs down. We'll take it from there. And, what was that last one?
It was robust.
Installing streetlights.
Oh, and then the streetlights, we kind of talked about, we said, okay, well, you know, put a light at the end of the driveway if you want, so, I mean. But anyways, the point is, all of those waivers...
Should be at least updated.
Yeah, should be, well, that's what I said, you know, and I don't, I think you're hearing what we're saying. So the ones that we may require, I don't think are going to affect anything you're doing right now. And I think we can handle when we have a more complete and reviewed application.
Many of them, Frank did explain, you know, he gave very big answers for this.
Right, but our plan, it's sure in writing, it sets, it helps maintain the precedent because not everybody is as thorough and professional as you guys.
And people will come back, you know, that, someone will come back and ask.
Yeah.
If it's documented, it's very easy to show why, that, the reason.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't need 500 words on each one, just, you know.
No, understood.
There's no trees bigger than 10 inches within 50 feet. Done. Look at that. You can put me on... You can put me on, you can put me on retainer.
I think we can expand on what Frank actually provided in writing to many of these waivers.
We have that.
Yeah, they're on there.
Okay, it's online?
No, if we have it, then that's even better. Then, if it's done, it's done.
Okay, that's just what I wanted to ask.
So, so those sounds like the, so, when I'm, right, water line, the G I S, that's not the acronym, but you know what I mean. And, and then the lights, those are the three.
Can I tell you what my conversation was with Jack Marsh?
Mm-hmm, I still want to see it written, from Jack, but go ahead.
You can't put a loop in because you need three hundred feet, and I don't have three hundred feet to loop back.
So as a member, as a chair of the planning board, for me to go against what the Water Department over here, I want to, I need to hear that from the board. See that written from the Water Department.
He didn't say that he wanted that. What he said was, whenever it can be, whenever a loop back can be put in, it should be put in.
Right, but, so every time that this board has waived, it hasn't been many, the few times that we've waived the loop, I've had correspondence from the Water Department, that's all I'm asking, I just want that, so...
Okay.
If anybody at home was watching this can get that for me, if you guys can get it, Stephanie can get it, I just want it.
Okay.
Charlie, did you get that? No. Want to make sure he wasn't dozed off over there.
You don't need anything, it's just, you know, the neighbors have a problem, we run off now and water and everything, and as we've all expressed, all this can do is better the situation, not make it worse, absolutely better.
Well...
You're directing the water, you're getting in the drains and it's not, you know, it's gonna go...
A lot of the problem was created by the installation of that berm, which is causing a lot of the water problems there, so...
That was addressed before.
That was...
And now the water's gonna be directed into the, into the wetlands.
Which is what it was doing before the berm went in, which was what was happening before the berm went in.
It was all above ground though, so it could...
Well...
The berm's coming down, so it's gonna go, it's gonna flow, it's gonna follow gravity.
But he can't, it's gonna go under the road.
Which rubbed out, it's below grade right now, so it's, you know, anything that's there is sitting there.
Sure.
If I may, the, the subject berm, when I walked through this property, as Bill just explained, because he clubbed that air out, I elected not to walk through this driveway, we had to drive through it. All the water was on his driveway. There was no standing water on the other side of the berm towards the up gradient neighbors. There's no standing water.
I think when we walked there and we looked at the elevation of those equalizer pipes, those pipes were like a half a foot or more above the grade in the neighbors, yeah, it's worth it.
The proposed?
The existing, the existing pipes that were put in.
Right, they're awesome.
They, no, I haven't, they asked for a pipe in case it filled up with water.
Right, my point being is, is you're ponding water in the, in the backyards of those homes with that berm. It's, it was clear as day to me, when I walked through there, you need, right.
But the berm's coming down.
Right, no, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I'm just commenting that, you know, fine, we'll just let it sit at that.
I would, I understood it, the berm stops water, the berm's gonna be gone, gravity's gonna flow, it's gonna go towards the wetlands, that's why it's the wetlands.
It's important for me to understand where the water is building up, just, just so I'm clear on this. We're talking about the berm, right as you were to take a right at the end of the driveway. So this section of berm over here, there was water building up on the neighbors' backyards?
Right.
Okay, I just want to be clear so I can look at that very carefully.
That's what I noticed, that's what I observed.
The pipes that were installed.
Right, and the...
So what is the elevation, finished elevation of the road behind the property that Mr. Benson's talking about? Is it, how does it compare?
It's gonna be higher.
Yeah, it's like two oh nine, then it goes to two oh eight.
Right, but they're, they're gonna put in transfer pipes, and that's what they're gonna look at, is to make sure that those transfer pipes are put in appropriately to drain the, drain the water.
So it's not gonna, so, if it's installed perfectly, and, and it'll be signed off by the peer review, so that'd be...
We're all set, everybody's gonna be happy.
Good, just want to make sure you're happy.
And I, I know that we definitely have touched on all of these issues at prior meetings, but the talk of the berm reminded me of, didn't they originally put that in because of a privacy concern? And then didn't we briefly talk about how we were going to address, like, their privacy concern or, like?
My recommendation was...
Did they ever want to read to, to get rid of the berm?
At the last meeting, I brought, because like six months ago, a year ago, when we talked about this, there was a, in a butter, that, his name escapes me, but he was here talking about that. I can't, I can't, I, I don't think, we obviously didn't agree to anything, we just, we listened. So at the last meeting, I mentioned that, but I know that, that gentleman wasn't here, but, I mean, that's, if, I, I'm sure if, if that gentleman comes and verbalizes he wants a couple of trees or something, it'll get emo.
Move, move out, move.
Yeah, okay.
That's one way to take care of it. Just kidding, Easton, trying to be, a little tired, trying to be funny.
Again, I don't mean to hammer home the point too much, but there are existing equalizer pipes under this berm?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're like a foot up in the berm.
But they're irrelevant.
They were installed, they were installed, if I may, I know why, when, they were installed by the site developer. They were installed by K L K because water was backing up. And that was to alleviate the problem of the water backing up onto the up gradient properties.
It was installed because they put the berm in and put the trees on to give privacy. The pipe wasn't put in afterwards, the pipe was put in at the same time as an overflow protection in case it built up. But it was up higher than, but I was out there last week and it was all kinds of water here, and there was nothing on the other side of the berm. And I, maybe it drained or maybe, I mean, it wasn't raining when I was out there, but I was out there with Walter, and there was nothing on, on any of these properties on the backside of the berm. But I'm removing the air because Conservation wants it out of there, and it's gonna be out of there.
So...
Yeah, let's just move on, like, what they're gonna...
Let's talk about what they're proposing, because we're, we're arguing about something that's going to be eliminated. We're not arguing, but so, so, let's end that.
And, and if I may, the Conservation Commission hasn't approved that yet. I've talked to the Conservation Agent and, and that, that's still...
Sure, but, but you know what? There are existing conditions, as far as I'm concerned, I don't care how they got there, who did what, who approved it, didn't, because those existing conditions are gonna change. So all we have to be concerned about is, okay, that proposed road, the way it's, you know, you put, how is that gonna work? And does that jive with Beta? You know, and, and that's, so, once we get that, then we're all good, you know? And, and so all this other stuff, please let's move on, because it's irrelevant, because it's, it's gonna be gone, so, anyways.
Hopefully they know the turtle's nesting on that berm.
That's... So, anyways, are we, can we, are we all set, can we ask for a continuance? All right. Somebody?
Well, just to be clear though, because I thought it wasn't a hundred percent clear. I know, I, I was there, I remember going through that list when Frank addressed those concerns. Because I think Stephanie, though, that you still, even though it may be documented somewhere in the minutes, it would still be helpful to have a, a written document in response to your... So are we clear on that? Because I wasn't sure that you unders, if, if that was clear, that you were providing that.
I, I believe I was reading it, this is what Frank had shared with me, and it was showing in italics his comment and reply to many of these questions.
Oh, maybe we don't, I don't personally have that document, I don't know if you...
Are we talking about the waivers? So we, we just need a writ, a written reason, maybe it exists already, maybe it doesn't. We don't need to determine that now.
Right.
All I know is, when we have the next meeting, I want one sentence blur, or, or more, I don't care, on why you want each waiver, that may exist now, I don't have the documents in front of me. If it does, great, if, so, we're all understanding that that's what we want.
Below the question and as a response.
Okay.
I believe that's what Frank did and read, so I can, I can write it.
Yeah, so, just give it to Stephanie if she doesn't have it.
Well, upload it, it should be uploaded for her, so while the board members can see it as well.
Multiple sides, sorry.
We're not keeping you up, are we? We're not keeping you up, are we?
It's been a tough month, let me tell you.
So we don't know when to continue, because we're not sure when they're...
No, we're gonna continue to the fourteenth, which they thought that we'd get enough time, because it's a month away.
I'll make a motion to continue. Thirty, uh, let's see, two thirty-three R Lincoln Street until the January fourteenth meeting.
All of those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
That was January, what day?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Thank you very much.
All right, next, you as well. Would you mind just popping that mic back in that stand? All right, next up, thirty-three Rockland Street, special permit for an in-law apartment. Is anybody here for that?
There, yeah.
Thirty-three Rockland?
Well, well done, that was right. I mean, it's games. No.
Waffle, right.
It's a distraction.
Yeah, I can check it out, I can find out who this looks like, it's a distraction.
Yep, at least, at least I can see it.
Won't fall down, I mean...
I'm online now, so...
You have a future?
I said I'm on, it's offline for some reason.
Oh, yeah, you want the battery to go more than an hour and ten minutes? It's all that high-speed pixelation eats up, eats up the battery. Oh, it's not happening on mine today, that must be the bad one.
Yeah, I don't know. I thought it was the wifi here, but it's not the wifi, like, it's, mine comes up, yeah, mine comes up just fine, no problem at all, so...
Come on in.
And they don't have...
Welcome.
They don't compete well with these devices.
Hey, how are you? Good evening. So, who's ever, if it is, you're gonna give a presentation or speak, just, microphone's here. If you just take it and identify yourself for the record and, and then feel free to present. A little easier, or whatever.
I think excuses...
Yeah, there you go.
Good evening, Chairman Strange and the rest of the board. My name is Corinne Blake, and this is Carl Blake. We're here to ask for special permission for the special permit in-law apartment for my mother and mother-in-law at thirty-three Rockland.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You can sit if you want, you know, or whatever you're comfortable with. We try to keep things as informal as we can. So do you want to present anything, or do you just want us to ask questions, or how do you want to proceed?
Well, I have a, we have a letter that we submitted to the board. And the reason why we're requesting and asking for permission for this in-law apartment is for hardship. We just lost my father, my mother lost her husband of forty-nine years, four months ago. And we would love for our mother and mother-in-law to live with us at thirty-three Rockland independently and separately while being close to her family for her assistance and support. And also we will allow us to enjoy her support as well. So I'd like to read the letter that we'd like, that we, with a request. Dear Chairman Gregory Strange and members of the board, Attached are our plans and online application for consideration by Easton Planning and Zoning Board for a special permit to be built and, and an attached in-law unit for our mother, mother-in-law at thirty-three Rockland Street. The attachments include the plot plan, proposed in-law apartment floor plan with elevation, an email from the Easton Conservation Department, our deed and the butter's list. We are asking for approval of this special permit to allow our mother, mother-in-law a comfortable place to live independently, separately, while being near her family. Her family can offer her more assistance and support. This unit will also allow us to enjoy her support as well. The zoning bylaws were amended on May twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen. Chapter two thirty-five zoning section forty-four in-law apartment states the following. Section five, the gross floor area of an in-law apartment, including any additions, shall not be greater than twenty-five percent of the gross habitable living area of the primary single-family dwelling unit, nine hundred square feet, whichever is smaller, however, where twenty-five percent of the primary single-family dwelling unit would be less than nine hundred square feet, the S P G A may permit up to nine hundred square feet floor area where they determine the apartment will be constructed as, so as to maintain the appearance and essential character of a one-family dwelling and any existing accessory structures and the character of the existing neighborhood. The current size of our home is seventeen seventeen square feet. Without a special permit, our mother, mother-in-law would be limited to four hundred and twenty-nine square feet. Since she will also be providing care for her two grandchildren, a four hundred and twenty-nine square foot apartment would be problematic. We do not believe that twenty-five percent will be a comfortable living space. Due to the front it sets back and the density of the trees surrounding the property and the proposed in-law unit apartment being built behind the current garage, we believe it will have little visibility from the street and should not impact the neighborhood or alter its single-family character. The current septic is designed for a four-bedroom home and the current structure has three bedrooms. In addition, the proposed in-law unit will comply with all other setbacks and other regulations of the zoning bylaw. Thank you for your time and consideration, Carl and Corinne Blake.
Thank you, and again, our condolences for your loss. Do you have any?
Um, no, I, I, I mean, I can just reiterate that if, again, based on the size of the house, they would be, if, if you multiply, what I did is I took the footprint of the house, the square foot, footage of the footprint of the house, multiplied it by two, by one and a half, and then if you multiplied that by twenty-five percent, you'd get five hundred and thirty-nine square feet, so the maximum you'd get, because I think you just looked at the footprint, but it's the total gross and it's a two-story in one area. But it still would be below the nine hundred square feet, and it sounds like below what they would, are looking for. They, they are also proposing an attached garage to the apart, the in-law apartment unit. So I think what is important to note is that that garage, and you can see it here, is set back eleven feet from the rear wall of the existing structure, which is right here. And, and this, I believe, is a garage, so this is the, right, this...
That's the existing garage.
That's the existing garage, two-car garage presumably to serve and continue serving the main dwelling, and this would be to service the in-law unit. It's also one hundred and thirty-six feet from the front, front yard line, so it's set quite a ways back from a visual standpoint. The whole in-law unit, which you can see right here, this is the rear of the existing structure, except for the garage is behind and at the rear of the, the property. The only comment I had, really, was that the siding, you can see if the existing structure is vertical and you have single-pane windows, and the proposed unit has horizontal, and it has divided lights in the top half of the window, so...
Okay, um, so, yeah, I mean, I think, I looked at this, and, you know, this, this fits the reason why we, we do in-law. And my only concern is that I saw the thirty by thirty and I saw the little mudroom, but mudroom serves both houses, and, you know, so you can say, so it's, it's irrelevant, because you could, you could add mudroom to the house, you know? And I applaud you for designing, you know, designing this, keeping it in scale with the existing house, you know, sometimes, you know, it's like, you didn't, you know, it's not twenty-eight feet taller than the existing house, or, you know, and it's, I live right up the street from this, so driving by all the time, it'll be... Yeah, so, you know, it's, it's, when we, when we crafted this bylaw, you know, because we're sort of a design-oriented board and, and the thought was, you know, having these designed in a way that it still looks single-family and that it would, you know, so this... having these designed in a way that it still looks single-family, and that it would, you know, so this, I think, was, you know, was well done, it functions, the, the floor plan obviously is what, what, you know, is needed, and so, anyway, so, and, you know, to Stephanie's point, um, so, you guys have any?
Yeah, I mean, this is sort of what, I mean, we just had a, sort of like a duplex, where in fact, felt like it was more just like, you're like attaching one house to another, and it was like two homes. And my point was that a lot of the, the older duplexes in Easton, you know, they're, they're smaller ones where, you know, like it's, where a family member could live, or, you know, or you have two smaller, like, two smaller homes that are attached to each other, whereas, like, that's sort of what, you know, this, this is, this is doing that, you're making enough living space for a family member who can, who can live there, whereas on the duplex, it was more, it's more a matter of just, like, how big, how big can we connect two houses, so I think this is perfect, and, you know, it's a good, that's the reason we have it, so, I like it.
Stephanie, could you just advance through the other pages, just because my, um. Of the design?
Yeah, yes, my.
So that's the, this shows the front elevations, um, this is the rear elevation, and again, this is the addition, the in-law apartment, this is the existing dwelling unit. And this is, so again, this is the existing dwelling unit, this is the proposed right elevation of the in-law unit, um, this is looking from the left, this is the existing structure. And I'm glad Greg mentioned that, because when I first looked at these, even though I could see from the first, the front elevation, you could not see the in-law unit, you, you scroll here, and you think, oh my goodness, there, but that's the house. So it's definitely in scale, it's not overwhelming, the existing dwelling unit. And that's just the existing, oops. Sorry, I don't know why that happened.
Town hall technology.
That was, that was me, I, I, I don't know what I did, um, I'll pull it back up.
I have paper, please.
Yeah, I've been in perspective.
Sure.
Oh, actually, it's this laptop.
I think placement is everything on this, and I agree with the other board members that, you know, you've, you've chosen the, the best placement of this addition to kind of minimize the impact on, on your design, and I think that's, um, that's the way to go, so, I, I, I agree that you've done a good job interpreting the intent of the board, as far as that.
So do the first floors align?
They will, yeah.
Okay.
They'll have access from the existing to the, they'll, just so she can get back and forth.
Right, but they'll be at the same.
The floor level will be the same.
Okay.
So, um.
Just procedurally, we didn't open the public hearing, so we can't close the public hearing?
Yes.
Whoops, that's okay.
Can we open and close it? Yeah, that was my point, before we close the public hearing, that's.
We're gonna open the public hearing, and then we'll tell everybody at home to rewind their DVR.
Well, I will tell you, the conservation commission doesn't formally open theirs, so.
But hold on.
Conservation wise, we did not read the notice of public hearing prior to starting to talk about it, so we're going to read it now. The town of Easton notice of public hearing, in accordance with the provisions of chapter 41, section 81 dash TMGL, the Easton Planning and Zoning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, December 10th, 2018, at 6:30 PM in the Mary Connolly Meeting Room, Easton Town Office is 136 Elm Street Northeast in Massachusetts, on the application from Karen, Corinne Blake for a special permit under Easton Town Code, chapter 235 zoning, section 235 to 44, in-law apartments, to allow the creation of an in-law apartment located at 33 Rockland Street, assessors map 5R lot 219. A copy of the application and plan may be inspected at the Planning and Economic Development Office, 136 Elm Street Northeast in Massachusetts, during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed application and plan should appear at the time and place designated for the public hearing. This notice is also available at masspublicnotices.org, Gregory Strange, Chair.
I liked Mrs. Blake's letter better. So, uh, so just since we screwed up a little bit, um, so we're all in the, everybody in this room obviously heard everything, and if there's anyone in the hall that would care to have us re-present, please show yourself, and everybody on home watching this, you can simply DVR back, if you so feel needed. So I think we're covered there, so, um, you've presented everything you wanted to present, right, would you like us to close the public hearing? It's just a, once we close the public hearing, that does, that allows us to vote, but you can't, you can't provide any more information after that.
You don't need to see nothing from the plot plan or nothing, we just.
We have it online.
We're all good with that.
Yeah, we have it.
Because if you have any questions on the contract, please, it's available.
Do you need to assess a question, so you can pay, or not give? Get those billables, or not give?
Seeing you closing the hearing, I just want to be aware.
Right, um, I mean, I don't see a reason, well, is there any more well, good with comments or questions, so, would you like us to close the meeting?
Yes, please.
All right, sure, could I, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion, all those in favor, motion passes. Okay, any board member care to make a motion on the proposed special permit?
To approve the special permit as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, motion passes unanimous, thank you, good luck, and you can just get in touch with Stephanie, she'll let you know what you need to do.
I'm buying an A would use progress.
Absolutely, yeah, wrap this straight.
We will, we'll be getting a decision, we'll be filed for, um, with the clerk's office, there's an appeal period, and by Wednesday, so we don't.
And thank you for your thorough and well-thought-out presentation and design.
Hope you like your, good luck.
Good luck.
I was, you were just sitting out there, you guys. Have a good night.
You too, thanks you as well, okay, meeting, uh, meeting minutes from November 26th. Anybody want to make a motion? When you're done, you can.
Motion to approve the minutes I submitted.
Second. Is, uh.
From November 26th.
All those in favor, motion passes?
I'm gonna abstain, just since I wasn't there.
Okay, uh, meeting minutes, chair report, uh, nothing to report, right, is there somebody to report? No, and work plan, we'll do that next meeting, because, and, and if we want to, because we don't meet for a month, so, maybe after our next meeting, if anybody's up for it, we can.
Do a belated holiday.
Sure, we haven't done that.
We'll hold you to it, we'll get through this time.
So don't give us a killer, don't give us a killer thing that, so the 14th, we're gonna go, we'll go up, we'll go to Profedia, or any other local establishment, I don't need to.
We have three things to sign, correct?
This thing on Thursday.
All right, so, happy holidays.
We need to adjourn, we need to adjourn, yes.
I, I, I.
It would have been better for you to.
All those in favor, oh, is there a second?